... county commissioners for Tuesday, June, or July 21st. It is 10:00 a.m. and time for us to begin. And with that, I would ask, Manager Brown, would you lead us in a salute to the flag?
Yes, ma'am.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Manager Brown. And with that, Madam Clerk, we'll go to roll call.
Thank you. Bob Lucy, Chair, via Zoom.
Here.
Marcia Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung, on the phone.
Present.
Von Hartung, via Zoom.
Here.
Jean Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney, via Zoom, David Watts Vial.
Here.
I'm County Clerk Nancy Parent. You have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we will go to our first public comment. Madam, or Mr. Chair, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, public comment. Item number three. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I see that we have two emails on our list. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. Our first one is from Elise Weatherly. It's captioned, "Time is running out. FYI, this will probably be the last time I will offer any information to the board. Surprisingly, very few want to hear what I have to say. And those that do, they can have my ear in return. Today's Facebook era. Do you know what I am grateful for in this pandemic? The churches are closing. The liars aren't getting money from the people they tried to make feel better about themselves in the requirement that congregants satisfy some kind of worship responsibility. I am grateful that the prophecies that the casinos would go black, this has to do with the row in Reno before there was even was a row, have happened. I am glad that my song, 'May You Always Never,' can be heard with new meaning. P.S. I will contact the Campbell's heiress Monday so she can get a kick and a laugh out of it. I am grateful that I am saving gas and wear and tear on my vehicle and that I don't have to feel so guilty about being a homebody. It's time, it's been a time of rest and revelation for me." Elise Weatherly. Our next email is from David Pisner.
Pisner.
Pisner, thank you. It's captioned, "Shutting Down Churches. To the county commissioners, completely shutting down churches again because of a problem that primarily exists in Las Vegas is not the answer for our community. As long as churches follow the safety mandates to keep the virus controlled, there should be no reason to not allow safe gatherings. Please keep this in mind while voting on Washoe County's restrictions." David Pisner, Carrier Coordinator. That concludes the email public comments that I have, Madam Chair.
Do we have any Zoom comments on Zoom? Okay, seeing no other additional public comments, we will close public comment. Bring it back to the board, Mr. Manager.
Item number four is Commissioner and County Manager announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information on topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Uh, ma- uh, Madam, uh, Vice Chair, yes, I have a few items. The first is to acknowledge that last week, Washoe County was designated by the White House Corona Task Force as a COVID-19 community that is experiencing spread. There is a color system that involves counties that are considered in the red zone. These are counties with above 100 cases per 100,000 population. Clark County in Las Vegas fell into that category. Washoe County fell into the yellow zone as a whole with this Reno metropolitan area. The key areas outlined for addressing our situation are not unfamiliar to what we've asked the public to do before in terms of wearing a mask, limiting social gatherings. At this point, we're asking no more than 25 people, so 25 people or fewer. Previously, we'd been at 50 people or fewer. And again, as, as you know, our bars and nightclubs have been closed. Use takeout, outdoor dining where possible. Protect anyone with serious medical conditions by staying at home and social distancing. So I thought I would acknowledge that we did, we do have information on our website and we also did a press release to get that messaging out. Secondly, with regards to coronavirus, we did, in the last few days, receive an update from the state in terms of how the CARES Act money will be distributed to counties and municipalities. I would expect that at our next meeting on August 18th, we will have a full report for you, but since it's late breaking news, I thought I would just share a couple of highlights. There is a mechanism and a process now for applying for the first half of the $20 million that has been awarded to the county. I think we've previously shared with the board the kinds of costs, but they must be related to coronavirus mitigation. And the initial reimbursement is for expenses that have already been incurred. We have been working with the other jurisdictions. You're going to hear from Kevin Dick later this morning, but our City of Reno, City of Sparks, where we've been sharing through the incident management team certain COVID-related expenses. This would include things like PPE, testing expenses, housing for those that need to be quarantined, et cetera. And to date, the total amount of expenditures is approximately $10 million. So that we're in the process, working with the comptroller and Assistant County Manager Vletich to put together that documentation. And you'll be seeing that at the next meeting. I just, again, thought I would share that this morning as it's late breaking news that we just became aware of. We'll also, at the next meeting, have a recommendation for this board in terms of the remainder of the funds, which will be about $10 million in terms of what we think our spending should be going forward. Having said that, I thought I would give an update on a couple of other late-breaking developments. I believe Commissioner Jung, at the last meeting, our last meeting, where I was not present, asked for an update on Safe Camp. The City of Reno actually provided a presentation at yesterday's community, I'm sorry, Homeless Advisory Board, SEHAB. And they actually took a look at what other communities are doing with regards to safe camps and encampments and the efficacy of these, of these encampments. I think I would, I would just, I will send a copy of the presentation to, to the board. Again, we just got receipt of this yesterday, but basically, the, the results were rather inconclusive in terms of what are the benefits of it compared to other homeless approaches, approaches to handling homelessness. And they've asked for some additional time to drill down further into researching these, these, these items. It will be reviewed again at the August SEHAB meeting. And then I thought I would update the board that they, also yesterday morning at SEHAB, there was an announcement by the City of Reno of their plans to move forward with an interim solution as far as addressing the homeless populations that are now in the event center. They indicated that our SEVA has requested that they vacate the event center by August 3rd and that they are making plans to do so. That's about two weeks away. The plan would have those, those populations being moved to an area on Fourth Street. Again, I'll share a copy of this presentation, which we received yesterday with Board of County Commissioners, but this is an interim solution that will be tented. It's adjacent to a current nutritional site that is on Fourth Street. And we believe a precursor to what might ultimately be the permanent solution, which might be the Governor's Bowl Park, which is adjacent to that, as you know. So I just would call attention to that. The last thing I would just point out, there, there are a couple of agenda items that I think we need adjustment on. One is, I'd like to recommend that we pull item 10, which is the Incline Village taxpayer issue. We received some late-breaking information that the board has not had a chance to review. So I would recommend that we pull that item and be able to review that. And then I believe that Commissioner Lucy has an interest in pulling item 19, which is the public hearing on the Reno Christian Fellowship issue.
Madam Vice Chair, if I may.
Yes, Chair, go ahead.
So, Madam Vice Chair, I have been in contact with the appellant as of this morning. The appellant, at this time, would like to continue the item. And so I am going to issue the allowance for that continuance, for them to continue to work with the staff and the commission in discussions of that amendment.
Okay. Since that's a public hearing, we will have to open it anyway and, and do any, you know, public comments or whatever and then...
That is, that is correct, Madam Vice Chair. We will open for public comment, but we will not be taking action on that item today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And also on 10, I think it's important that we point out that the reason this is being pulled is so that we can take it to a legal session and get a review for each of the commissioners on the final details that we, just late-breaking, as, as Mr. Manager has indicated, so. Any, anything else, Mr. Manager?
Not at this time.
Okay. Commissioners, anything from any of you?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. Just a, just a quick update for both Commissioners Jung and Herman. I've asked for both Highland Ranch Parkway and Seventh Street, O'Brien Pass, going all the way over to Golden Valley, to put on our, to be put on our regional transportation plan to review those for improvement. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Chair Lucy, anything else from you?
No, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you for taking me, helping me run the meeting today out of an abundance of caution. I was traveling last week and it was to my benefit not to be with everybody, so I am in my, at my office, working at this time, and will be back with you shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, and you're very welcome. I'm glad to help out anytime I can and glad you had a nice vacation when you were traveling. Commissioner Jung, do you have anything?
Only to say thank you, Mr. RTC Commissioner Von Hartung, for hearing my plea regarding that pass that needs to be fixed, widened, controlled, et cetera, if only because how much RTC knows that that is a favorite shortcut and that's not the way to most people around. So I thank you so very much for that, and my constituents do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Herman? Okay. So with that, we will close item four and move on to item, oh, sorry, Mr. Manager.
I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair. I forgot an item in terms of an agenda adjustment. On the consent agenda, Agenda Item 9C3, which has to do with the public records request, there's a minor change in the language. It currently reads that payment may be made by check or money order made out to the agency. We would like to amend to read, a department may also accept payment by cash or credit card if those means are readily available and deemed acceptable. I, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that, Madam.
Okay.
Vice Chair.
All righty. Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to item five. Mr. Manager.
Item five is our certificates honoring the following Washoe County employees who have completed essential employee development courses. They are not with us today because we're social distancing and we don't have folks in the chamber, but we'd like to acknowledge the efforts of these folks. As you all know, the county encourages lifelong learning and the professional development of all of our employees. And administered by our HR Department, Excellence in Public Service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. Completion of these courses over two years demonstrates the employee's commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement and to Washoe County's journey, journey of excellence. I'm pleased today to recognize that commitment. And the list of employees and recipients are Alicia Burke Bigler, Office Assistant Specialist in the Sheriff's Office, and she took the RPSTC, Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff. Second is Nancy Cummins, Fiscal Compliance Officer with the Health District, Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff. Monica Kirkendall, Office Assistant Two in Human Resources Agency, I'm sorry, Human Services Agency, Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Jennifer Leaker, Office Support Specialist in the Sheriff's Office, Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. I hope I said your name right, Jennifer Leaker or Leiker. Rick Nimitz, Office Assistant Two, District Attorney's Office, Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Carissa Riley, Office Assistant Two, Human Services Agency, Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Congratulations to Hall, who completed our certification.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you to all our staff who spend their time doing all of these different classes and really working hard to improve themselves and also to improve the work they do for the county. So thank you, everybody, for that. We're always happy to hear these things. And then we, so with that, we will move on to item six.
Item six is an appearance and presentation by Washoe County District Health Officer Kevin Dick on COVID-19 impacts within Washoe County to include an update on community symptomatic and asymptomatic testing, contract, contact tracing, operational plan, hospital COVID-19 patient capacity, and surge planning and launch of community messaging campaign on the novel coronavirus. I believe we have Health Officer Dick on the line.
Health Officer Kevin Dick, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Burke Bigler and members of the county commission. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'm Kevin Dick, District Health Officer for the Washoe County Health District, and appreciate the opportunity to provide you with an update on our COVID-19 response. Want to acknowledge Aaron Kenniston, our instant commander, providing support for the health branch in this response, and his team at the IMT, and the regional managers, city managers, and Manager Brown for their work together with us as we move through this emergency response. We are continuing to have fairly high numbers of cases occurring in Washoe County. We reported 65 cases yesterday. We have a total case count to date of 4,173. We've surpassed 100 deaths that have occurred from COVID-19. Yesterday, we were at 102 deaths that have occurred in our community. We do have almost 3,000 individuals that have recovered. We're at 2,975 recoveries, but we have over 1,000 active cases. We have 1,096 active cases. Currently, 64 people hospitalized, 320 people that have been released from the hospital. Thankfully, our hospital capacity remains good. As of yesterday, we had reported 72% of our short-term acute care hospital beds were occupied. 61% of ICU beds are occupied, and 14% of ventilators are in use. These are statistics that we get from the Nevada Hospital Association. I'd like to note that in the data that we'll be releasing later today, you'll see a sharp drop in the number of ICU beds that are occupied. And the reason for that is that the methodology is changing in the way the Nevada Health Association, Nevada Hospital Association reports those numbers, in that they will be looking at not just the ICU beds, but also the cardiac beds. And moving forward, rather than calculating just off of staff beds, they're also going to be putting out some statistics that are looking at what the capacity is versus licensed beds. The reason for this is because of the amount of hospitalizations that are occurring in Clark County at this time. They have much smaller ICU bed availability, and they're working on their surge plans. And as they're surging, they may exceed the, well, as they surge and they staff additional beds, even though they're beyond their licensed bed capacity, you will not be able to tell from a statistic that looks at the percentage of staff beds that, how much they're surging. So it'll provide us with some measures of that as we move forward. So hopefully, I didn't confuse you too much with that explanation. We're continuing to be quite busy with our testing and our contact tracing. We have a record day at the Post drive-through test site on Friday last week, where we tested 665 people. Yesterday, we had 529 people come through the Post. We're operating it today at a reduced staffing level. We have 306 people coming for testing today. And then we'll operate it fully staffed again on Wednesday and Friday of this week. We're working to ramp up to five-day-per-week testing at the Post. Unfortunately, with the increased testing that is occurring, the state lab is backlog with getting the tests run and the results reported out. So yesterday, Dr. Pandori was commenting on that delay, a five-to-six-day backlog that's occurring with getting those results out of the state lab. With the high numbers of cases that are coming in, we're also having difficulty keeping up with the case investigations. So we're notifying people immediately when we receive their positives to let them know to self-isolate, but it's several days before we can actually get the contact tracing accomplished. We have brought in about 30 additional contact tracing staff over the last couple of weeks. Want to mention the Nevada Public Health Training Center at UNR has been helping us with recruitment and interviewing and staffing, training, and bringing the staffing on board. But with the level of staffing that we put together through the grant funding, the federal grant funding that we receive for testing and contact tracing, we've already reached that capacity with the staffing. And so we're working with the regional managers to secure some of that CARES funding that came to the community to help us increase the staffing to the point where we can keep up with the volume of people seeking testing and following up with that case investigation and contact tracing. The National Guard has been helping us, but they're currently scheduled to step down July 31st, and so we're, that's why we're bringing on additional staff to be able to run the Post and do the specimen collection, to be able to do the call center work on the front end, get all the paperwork done for the tests that go to the lab, and then to do the follow-through with notifying negative results and with that case investigation and contact tracing on the positives. The, if you look at our website on the dashboard, it shows you a graph of the seven-day moving average of new cases that are occurring in Washoe County. And we are, we're below the peak that we hit around the July 4th weekend, which was about 90 new cases a day that are, were being reported. We're somewhere just below 70 new cases now, but we have been, again, trending upward over the past week. So we remain concerned with the level of COVID-19 that we have in, in the community and that transmission, the community transmission that is occurring. The state has been reporting numbers of people that have tested positive that are contacts that we're tracing. And that, the number of our positive tests that are contacts that we've identified are only about 17%. And so that tells you that where we're at now, with the degree of community transmission that's occurring, the testing and contact tracing is not sufficient for us to be controlling this, the spread. And that's why it's so important, as we move forward, to continue with the messaging and the importance of everybody to help one another to avoid the spread of the disease. So the social distancing, the wearing of masks when people are out and about and can't maintain outdoors at six feet of separation, and when people are in enclosed spaces, is very important for us to work to prevent further spread of the disease. The county manager is working with RPIO and the Regional Information Center team to ramp up a, a marketing and advertising campaign so that we can be actively promoting a positive message on personal actions that people can take that will help to protect us and help to keep our economy open moving forward. So we hope to have more to report for you on that and hopefully have this very evident to everybody in our community from billboards and buses and advertisements, et cetera, to, to keep that attention going. It's, this is such a long-term event that we're going through. We really need to be working to keep people engaged and not complacent as we respond to this if we're going to be successful with keeping businesses open, having our schools available, et cetera. So I guess from another aspect, we're continuing to work with the state and with Deloitte, which is the contractor that they brought onboard, working to develop a Salesforce platform that we can use for our contact tracing, our case investigation and contact tracing efforts. If we can get this up and running, it will help to streamline things and provide some efficiencies, unfortunately, and quite frustrated with the, the speed at which it's being developed, and we're not on that platform yet. The state also has several hundred contact tracers that are available through the Deloitte contract. However, with the scale of the cases that are occurring in Clark County now, those, that staffing is, has been devoted to Clark County for follow-up with the contacts that are identified down there. I would mention, I was just looking at some, some numbers today, and the number of new cases per capita that are occurring in Clark County right now are almost four times the number of new cases that we're having per capita here in Washoe County. So thankfully, we're not in the position that Clark County is right now, but we need to continue to work. We still are at quite high levels for what we've experienced in Washoe County and want to work to try to continue to bring those numbers down to a more manageable level so that we can be more successful with our testing and contact tracing strategy. that we can be more successful with our testing and contact tracing strategy. I mentioned that the state lab was getting backlogged. We're also actively working to try to secure some additional testing capacity through private lab. And so we'll, I'll report more on that in the future if we're successful in being able to accomplish that. I think I'll stop my briefing there and see if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. That is very good information, and we appreciate that things aren't beautiful here, but at least we are holding our own for the time being. So Commissioner, does anybody have any questions or comments for Health Officer Dick? Hearing none.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
I was waiting for if anybody else would like to go on. I can't see anyone.
All right. Commissioner Jung?
I have several questions, Mr. District Health Officer. And I'm going to go in the order of your presentation, please. When you mentioned that the, or actually, our manager announced that we are a yellow in the Reno-Sparks metro area, what, do you know the parameters of what they consider the Reno-Sparks metro area? And do they give each area a color code? And where can I look at this map?
So the Reno area is a yellow, the Washoe County is also a yellow, under the guidance that came out from the White House that the governor used for identifying those counties and asking for the additional information of what we were doing in our response to this. The, I just received, and if you can be patient for a minute, let me see if I can find it.
I won't be able to see it, so do it for the rest of the people.
Yeah, but I can at least give you some criteria that was just provided to us, and I'm finding it right now, from the state. And it's, it's called Nevada's, Nevada's County COVID-19 Elevated Disease Transmission Tracker. And it says that we're, this one doesn't reference the red or the yellow codes, but it says that we're, a county is flagged for elevated disease transmission if it meets two of the three criteria. Average number of tests per day less than 150. We're currently having about over 1,000 test results reported for Washoe County a day, so we're, we're above that 150 number. That's test per day per 100,000. The case rate per 100,000 being greater than 100, over, per 100,000, over a 14-day period. And I've been tracking that number, and we are over 100, we're at 190. And then our case rate per 100,000 greater than 25, and a testing positivity of over 7%. We've been hovering right at, right around 7% or so. So we're, we're right on the border of that one. We definitely trigger on the case rate of over, per 100,000 of over 100 over the prior 14-day period.
Okay. Can somebody in staff anywhere in Washoe County, please send me a map of what the CDC per the White House used for the whole country with details? And then can I also see this Nevada County Elevated, I've never even heard of this website, which I would think our lobbying group who takes care of all of our counties at the statewide level would have sent to us? Can I please get both of those? And then my second question is, you were talking about the drive-up testing and the influx and outflux based on staffing. Do you want everyone to get tested? Or are you, or how are you, should I be getting tested? I have never went and tested because I have never got the message that you wanted everyone to test. So can you explain that for me and the public, please?
So this is a, it's a good question to ask, and it's something that Dr. Pandori raised on the state call the other day, was, is there a strategy for testing? Because if we continue to test people and send them all to the state lab, and they're backlogged for testing, and we don't get results back until five or six days after somebody has, has tested positive, that really diminishes our ability to be successful with the case investigation and contact tracing. You want a quick lab turnaround to be able to jump on those cases and have them properly isolated and have their contacts quarantined. So we had originally proposed a testing strategy that was focused on symptomatic individuals and priority populations, first responders, healthcare providers, our vulnerable populations of people in assisted living, and the elderly housing arrangements, for example. We have been open to anybody that comes to the, through the website portal for their risk assessment or calls the call center to get scheduled for testing. And that's what the governor has been pushing for, is to have the testing open to everyone. I think that's going to be something we really need to be thinking about and perhaps reconsidering if we're experiencing those delays from the state lab. So I would say, no, we don't want everybody rushing to testing if it's going to slow us down in identifying people that are symptomatic with the disease, and we could be working to help contain the spread from them.
Thank you very much. The third question I have is, why do you have a contact tracing lag in terms of getting a hold of the positive to manage contacting all of the people and places they have been to arrest the future spread and the exponential, exponential rate of which we know it spreads?
It's purely a matter of what we can accomplish with the people that we have. We, we're just overwhelmed with the number of cases that we're getting through, this, the lab testing that is coming through for us. I can tell you that we're not alone. Clark County is much more overwhelmed than we are, and it's something that's occurring across the country. That's why we're working to try to secure some of those CARES dollars through the regional funds to be able to supplement our staffing and bring more people onboard. It's not helping right now that we're in this phase where the guard is stepping down. And it's, it's, we, we're trying to transition to have the new cases all handled through our new staffing so that we don't have people that are, have their case being managed that then loses their case manager as the, as the guard steps down.
Okay. So Mr. District Health Officer Dick, and for the entire community, we have to get this contract, contact tracing down to a cellar art. This needs resources thrown at it. You cannot ask our public to do all of this social isolation, to wear our masks, to, we've asked business owners to become sheriffs and police officers to enforce our law. We have to hold up our end of the bargain. If we're not doing contact tracing, what are we doing? That's the one thing, a lever we can pull. We can't push the state, but that is one lever this community can pull, and it should be done faster, not slower. And that leads me to the next question I have for you. When this outbreak started, we got daily-
Can I please respond to that?
Yes, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Our people are working as hard as they can, and we are doing contact tracing. But it's not the silver bullet that's going to solve this thing. And I think we're hearing way too much about testing and contact tracing, and that's going to be the solution to this thing. And long-term, the solution is the social distancing and wearing masks, et cetera. And testing and contact tracing helps with those cases that we do identify to get them separated. But it's not like we're just going to go back to normal and testing and contact tracing is going to take care of this for us. Everybody needs to be part of this, and the masks need to continue. It's not going to replace that.
Okay. Well, if you would let me continue with my next part of this, that would have gone. And you were concerned about the emergency of the contact tracing. I took the urgency that you conveyed and then made that as an issue. It has no judgment on your staff. You should be hiring a whole lot more temporary staff. There's no judgment on your staff. I even, I don't even know why they're doing it. But this is taking too long under my watch. This is my taxpayers' dollars, and I don't want to hear that government isn't doing their end of it, rather than you're scolding all of us that we're not doing our part. And we are doing our part, and we're doing a damn good job. And I definitely know there's an age group who's doing fabulous because they all live in my district, and that is people who are age 75 and older. So we need to hear from government and their tax dollars that you are plugging all these holes that you actually have control over. You have no control over my citizens' behavior. The only thing you can do is model it, reassure them, but most importantly, hold up your end of that. So that's my point to that. My next question is, those emails we used to get every single morning from the JIC, who is in charge of those?
Emails from the JIC.
I don't know. It's not exactly what you walked in telling us today, Mr. Dick. You said there's been this many recoveries, there's been this many hospitalizations. We used to get that every single day via email. Where are those?
We do a briefing on Monday, or Tuesdays and Fridays, and then those, that information goes out in our press announcement every, every day.
Excuse me, I might be talking to the wrong person, and forgive me, Madam Chairwoman. I need to find out, for the record, who is in charge of every single day constituents got emails in which it was announced, things like we were announced to this morning. 2,975 recoveries, 1,096 active, 64 hospitalized, 320 released. Nobody gets those daily anymore, and I'm going to tell you, that is directly, not a correlation, it's a cause, why people don't know that we are on fire right now with COVID because we've, we've dropped this ball of this daily dose via an email, not via what you do to the media. I'm talking about communications to my citizens. Nobody believes that they're in a bad time right now. They look at me like I don't even know what I'm talking about. And I believe that's because we led up on the urgency, the numbers. Everybody thought they were smooth sailing because government demonstrated to them they didn't need to worry about it on the daily. So that's my other frustration with this one. That needs to be reinstated. And then finally, you said that you are, you are going to rely on communicating to constituents how important it is and what, where we are and why. And I might want to encourage all communicators to consider a different way to communicate this, which again, is not scolding and telling people how they are conduct themselves as grown-ups. Instead, tie it to what's in it for them for their gain, vis-à-vis. If we can get a hold of this and government does their job of getting contact tracers and absolutely isolating, not current staff, I'm not talking about district health staff, I think they're wonderful, please don't get defensive. Secondly, if they, if they will do all these things, businesses will be able to do commerce face-to-face again much sooner. We won't have to go backwards in our, which we will, we know that. But we can tie it to the economic gains that come from people doing the right thing if they care about business or the economy, which in a capitalistic society, you better. Secondly, we have never explained to people the very importance of why we're really containing all of this. I don't know if it's because we overlooked it or we didn't think people could understand it, but the bottom line is, we are trying to keep hospital beds open because if we don't, and we get a giant surge, God forbid, for your people that you love, or maybe yourself, maybe your child gets in a car accident that is relatively serious, certainly, I would want my loved one to be seen in an emergency room and perhaps stay the night, and they're going to send you home and say, take care of it until our hospital has a bed. That's the bottom line. So those two messages, I never see. And I think we need to connect that for people on that personal level and as a community level because that is the stark reality. That is really what we're managing, hospital bed capacity, and one of the worst states in the nation, if not the bottom of the barrel, of physicians, emergency rooms, clinics per capita. So I would like to see a lot more of that and those daily emails that goes over the data, the trend. And again, instead of admonishing people to do what government wants, we need to demonstrate that we're doing with their tax dollars exactly what we're, they, we, they are helping us prevent. We are another cog in that wheel. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Any other comments or questions for Health Officer Kevin Dick? Hearing none. This is not, not-
I'm sorry, your question?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke, I just wanted to identify for Commissioner Jung that those daily stats that she's looking for are on the dashboard on the covid19washoe.com website, so that they're available for everybody in Washoe County to visit and get those, those statistics there versus having to be on a mailing list to receive them. So they're, they're on the covid19washoe.com website. They're updated there on a daily basis. And as I mentioned, Eric Brown is, is working to help us bring a, a marketing firm onboard who will have expertise in providing the types of messaging that Commissioner Jung was just talking about.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
And I would say, I am not pleased with that answer. These emails need to be sent to that mailing list that was already here regionally, and they need to go daily. We are on the night that's turning red in a red state, vis-à-vis the White House's designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Chair Lucy, do I keep seeing your picture? Are you trying to ring in?
I am, Madam Chair. Thank you. I, I wanted to acknowledge a couple of things that Health District Officer Dick brought up during his discussion. First and foremost, one of the biggest annotations that we continue to look at and discuss through the information is the capacity of our ICU beds and the structure of that. Now, ICU beds are just that, they're relative to the need within the hospital. If they need 10 ICU beds, they're going to have 10 ICU beds, and then obviously, that those ICU beds would be at capacity. If they need more, the hospital will create more. It's a flexible number, so it's one of those numbers that just can't be constantly relied upon as we're out of capacity of ICU, or this is flexible, or... So I want that, one, one of the first things I want to put on, on the record. Two, the other thing, in my travels last week to Florida, now, being in Florida, one of the hotbeds within the country, I constantly was enlightened by the work that they're doing. Yes, they are having challenges with a massive spread, and that is due to what Commissioner Jung is talking about, improper information not getting out, and they're not having the proper messaging, you know, travel, and people aren't social isolating, I mean, social distancing and wearing masks appropriately at certain times. However, the information that they did provide via county on the Florida website with the moving averages and their, and their fluctuations and what they're seeing different is fantastic. And I was really impressed by the information that they provided to all of their citizens and residents through Florida via each county. And each county is identical in their reporting process, which was, which was fantastic. Now, obviously, they have a different system there and have that ability to do so, but I'd like to work and try to see if we can do that. And then third, Commissioner Jung, one of the things that you had spoken to in regards to the map that was put out by the White House, the White House will be having a special briefing tomorrow with all county leaders that would like to participate at 1:00 PM Eastern on, with the, with the CDC team and the White House COVID-19 Task Force. Those individuals would be happy to share that information with you for, for you to attend. They will go over the information that identifies the maps, how they've reached those types of anticipations of building those maps through the CDC. Happy to share that with you. I'm going to participate in that phone call at 1:00 PM Eastern tomorrow, but wanted to make that, that information available for you as well. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your comments. And Commissioner Jung, I appreciate yours. I think we do have a number of issues that we're still working through, and this is a work in progress because it's something that none of us have ever seen before. Mr. Dick, there, are you still with us, Mr. Dick?
Yes, I am.
Okay, there's, there's one question that has been presented to me, and I think- Okay, there's one question that has been presented to me, and I think I know the answer to it, but I thought maybe it'd be a good idea to put it on public record. I have had several people say to me, how do we know which ZIP codes the people who are passing away from this live in? And my sense is that we don't know that because it's probably a HIPAA issue, privacy, that we don't release that type of information, but is that correct?
When we have small numbers, then it makes it much more difficult for us to provide that information. There's kind of a standard threshold that you want to have 11 or more cases before you're making that public. And so I think that is a difficulty for us with the identifying where deaths are occurring in the community.
Okay. Thank you very much. I know that issue is probably going to come up as this pandemic continues to impact our community. I know it'll come up again, but I think what I will do in the future is refer people to 311 and then send them to you on that because I have received that question several times. Anything else? Any comments, any questions? Mr. Dick, anything final you'd like to say?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hartung.
Before Mr. Dick makes his closing comments, Mr. Dick, I don't think I heard, are we using the overflow housing on Edison that's used for isolation? And if so, what percentage or what number are we using?
We are not using the Edison housing at this point, and the instant commander, Aaron Kenniston, is working on plans to be able to start demobilizing that site because of costs that are incurred while it's not being used. We do have also an arrangement with WellCare to be able to help with people that have COVID-19 or COVID-19 symptoms that are homeless and need assistance. That facility is, we've downsized the number of beds that we have, that arrangement with WellCare Florida, about half of what we started with. That facility is currently about 27% occupancy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Dick, any final comments?
I just want to thank everyone for their partnership and support for the Health District through this and for the community for the tremendous efforts that they're making to help to prevent the spread.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the good work. With that, we will close Item 6 and move on to Item 7. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Item 7 is an appearance by Washoe County Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas for an update, discussion, and possible direction regarding the Washoe County Our Place Project. I believe Assistant County Manager Thomas is with us by Zoom.
Good morning, Ms. Thomas.
Good morning. Good morning, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. So I've shared my screen, so hopefully everyone is able to see the slides that we've prepared for the update on the Our Place Project.
They're on our screen.
And if you recall, last June, actually June, July, August, we had come to the board with a series of items, and one of those items was the ability for me to have the authority to sign contracts, design and construction contracts for future projects so that we could stay on schedule. And the commission gave me that authorization, and as part of that, I was reminded that we were to come before you with regular updates. And so this is one of those updates for you. It's a very good scenario coming out of our previous conversation, so I'm excited to give you some overview on the construction and where we are with this. I also have, waiting in the wings here with me, the visionary, I've got Amber Howell, who is available should we have programmatic questions. But I will just be overviewing for you the construction, a little bit of the budget, kind of the future status, some of the strategic planning issues as your update for the Our Place Project. So as we go through the project, here we go, I'd like to bring forward a reminder of some of the actions that this policy board has taken to get us to where we are now. Discussion for this project began, boy, over two years ago when a member of us went to the NAMHS campus, and NAMHS is, as you recall, the Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health Services Campus. We went to that campus to explore the possibility of moving the men's shelter there. And it was through the visionary concept of our staff, namely Amber, that we looked at it a different way, and some of these buildings on site were absolutely able to be utilized for perhaps women and children, which is something that the human services agency specialized in a little bit more. So it was in August of 2018 that we brought that recommendation to the CHAB, to the homelessness advisory board for the region, and then quickly moved into a lease process as we were facing an election at the governor's level, and we weren't sure how well it would be received. We had good relationships with the existing governor and his staff, so we moved quickly to get a lease before this body so that we could start moving forward on the project. I won't go through all of these, but I'll remind you that we started construction by awarding a construction manager at risk process last August, so we've had Q and D construction on site. We've gone through a series of guaranteed maximum price or GMP packages, which is how this project was scheduled with our capital improvement folks. And so we are now fast forwarding through 2019 and into 2020 where, after a series of budget approvals, we have come forward with some of the final pieces of this project. You all know and participated in a June 17 virtual opening this year, so you know the project is well underway. We've got a few things that we're celebrating, the grant for the playground that came forward. We brought on our operator RISE, which is the Reno Initiative for Shelter Inequalities. We have a provider that's been working with us for the last couple of months. Even during COVID, we were able to move forward, so I think that was an important point, that we didn't lose a lot of ground during this due to supply chain or other issues. We certainly experienced some delays, but I think it's a testament to the very capable staff, both in human services, from a programmatic side with the capital improvement staff, capital project staff that you've got working on this, and then the budget folks, all pulling forward to make this thing happen. This past month, in June, we were able to move the women into a temporary location in downtown, out of the Reno Event Center. As we know, there's been some desire to get that facility and event center open back to its normal and regular agenda, so we were able to work with the operator, with the city of Reno. We've got women there safely housed with security and so forth until the final piece of the project becomes ready for move-in, which is the women's shelter, and that's mid-August, so August 15. So that walks us through essentially kind of the board action that has been taken by you all up until this point. And so to recap what has been accomplished, we've seen the completion of several of the buildings, we had our families and children move in, we've got some, like I mentioned, work to do remaining on the women's shelter, but that's moving forward well. Been working on the fencing plan, security, all kinds of issues have been working forward. And then a couple of outstanding completions that don't delay the movement of the people, but we have the community garden coming forward, which you have all seen a presentation on. And that brings us to the current state where we've got a construction investment of about $14.7 million. And so just for this board and the public to understand the commitment and the leadership that you all have shown in moving the dial on the folks that are experiencing homelessness in this region. So just a little information on the data, I had shown this probably last June, so a year, a year and a month ago. The numbers have moved a little bit just because of construction. You know, we had conceptually how many people would fit, but with construction, we have the current status. I mean, you can see moving the dial from the number of beds currently in the region up 110%-ish to 105 that'll come online, as well as a significant increase of about 93% in daycare capacity. So again, kudos to this board, to the vision of the folks that are working on it, and we continue to move forward. We, as an organization, have put priority to vulnerable populations. The people experiencing homelessness has been a focus of this board and then, of course, regionally, and becomes more significant as we move through the pandemic state. So we know that we need to do this as a region, this can't be done in a vacuum, and so we continue to put a focus on that. We're working as a team to revise the vulnerable population's goals so that we can continue to put a focus on the areas that are important. I think you all know that one of the goals of this was to separate the populations, and we've successfully done that, almost to completion now next month. We have, without a doubt, begun to increase targeted case management around these populations, so not just sheltering, but actually looking at fixing long-term, the issues and the wraparound services that are necessary to improve this population, much like the successful Crossroads Program. And so again, through the process, we repurposed some underutilized existing facilities, which I think was pretty innovative. And then we're moving forward with some needs that we are looking to accomplish as we wrap up the project. I know it's a pretty decent-sized location. We have the southeast quadrant of the NAMHS campus, which the campus itself is about, I think, 90 acres. And so vehicles is going to be important, not only to get around, but to take individuals to appointments, to move the food service to and from, and then other issues. So we're looking to figure out how to get some vehicles. We continue to put a focus on affordable housing as we transition populations out so they can go into permanency. There has been a real incredible effort that the human services folks have put on securing appropriate interactive equipment for children. One of the benefits of the location has been the outdoor space. I think it's a great campus for people to really go through a transformation and focus on what they need in the future. And so as we look to secure issues, or items rather, for the campus, I think you can see bikes and playground equipment, things like that are necessary. Then we'll continue to work with Nevada Senior Services and looking at expanding the daybreak program, but with COVID and the budget situation currently, that's been put on a little bit of a pause. So those are what we're looking at as far as future needs. And then lastly, as I wrap up, just a quick overview on this, I have been helping to bring it forward just because human services, the budget issue, the capital project team, that's all wrapping up. And so future updates, I think, would be well-received, especially if Human Services Director Howell wanted to bring this to you. Perhaps we look at data that we get from the provider, RISE, or things that continue to evolve. So my ask of the board during this presentation is, how often would you like them? And of course, I'd love to pass the baton over to Amber since she's the subject matter expert, but that would be the question that I would leave you with as I wrap up the presentation. So thank you for giving me the time this morning to help bring you up to speed.
Thank you, County Manager Thomas. This is such a wonderful project, and you're doing such a great job on it, you and Ms. Howell both, and we really, really appreciate that you've taken such a strong lead on it and everything you do. You are a real asset to us, and so thank you very much for all that you've done. And also, Ms. Howell, commissioners, any comments, any direction to County Manager, Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas on this issue?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas, I'm glad you brought up Daybreak. Do we have some kind of timing working with the folks down south with Nevada Senior Services and Jeff Klein? Is there, I mean, are we hopeful maybe this year? Because there's just such a huge need, as you well know, for adult daycare services for those with memory care issues.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I continue to stay in touch with Mr. Klein. We have the building, which is huge, and we're writing that building into the currently renegotiated lease. We're working with DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services, as well as State Lands to make sure that the lease that we are moving forward with, because we continue to tweak, you know, and different buildings have moved, we've got kind of where our current Women's Crossroads Program is moving, so we continue to keep building 2A as an important piece of the senior services puzzle. Really what it is, is AID has put in a recommendation to have that facility built out. That didn't pass through the capital improvement process. Obviously, we've got, you know, some serious budget issues that we're facing. But my understanding and my conversations with Mr. Klein are that they, given that we have the structure, they may be able to raise the capital necessary to put the program in place. So we continue to have those conversations. We sort of had a little bit of an agreement where once we get the rest of the campus up and going and humming along, which will be in very short order, we can start focusing on things like the Daybreak Program. So we will continue to stay in those conversations with him.
Okay. And we've not defunded the Daybreak Program that currently exists on Ninth Street, have we?
No, and I'll let Amber cut some out a little bit. Obviously, we've had to retool the way that we provide that service, given that, you know, the whole distancing and how many folks we were able to service over at the senior center. So I don't know if Amber is able to chime in or unmute.
Well, before that occurs, I do have one other question, because I'm glad you brought up the Crossroads Program for women. I did want you to touch briefly on addiction services and what we're offering for the current residents. And my hope is, and I just feel like this is a must, and that is, if you're in our program, if you're in our facility over there, that you're in one of our addiction programs, you know, so that we can really, like Step 2, which is just a model in our community, and they just do such amazing work, as you well know, so that we can continue to advance them and get them to a point of self-sustainability.
Yes, thank you. Looks like Amber's on, I think she's unmuted, so if she wants to add to that, certainly you know how successful they've been around these programs. So I'll turn it over to her.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Amber Howell, Director of Human Services Agency. We have not stopped the funding or the program of the current Daybreak Facility. It's been difficult to figure out a good time to phase back in based on the vulnerability, but we're starting to phase in in a hybrid-type model to bring those back that really benefit from the Daybreak Program. And as Ms. Thomas mentioned, we also have extended our Crossroad Beds tremendously by the help of Grace Church. So we now have seven homes that we use, so addiction services is definitely a part of the campus, and it's a nice pipeline from the emergency shelter component to another location on the campus so they can begin working on their addiction and mental health needs that they may have.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Howell. And I know that there are real challenges with the Daybreak Program with respect to social distancing and the requirements. I completely understand, and I don't know how we've been able to respond to the community because there's such a huge need. And, you know, prior to COVID, I mean, it was, it's just a, I call it a tsunami. And so I'm thankful that you guys are still looking at that, and I'm hopeful that we can put some type of a more robust program together in the not-too-distant future. But I also understand, given the circumstances with COVID and the restrictions, that it's going to be difficult because they are a very, very vulnerable portion of the population because it's, I mean, it's hard to keep them distanced and, you know, to just participate in all the requirements. I know that those homes that do serve that need right now are, it's just a huge challenge for them, as we have heard in the news. So I appreciate the diligent work that all of you are engaging in. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Ms. Thomas, could you tell us how many, exactly how many people we've moved to Our Place? Do you know what the number is?
So we have currently moved 28 families, and I don't know the exact number, I think Amber may have that number, but we have between the building 602, 603... But we have, between the building 602, 603, and before, we have 28 families that we've moved, and we have the ability to service 85 children through the daycare.
Okay.
So I think that also fluctuates at any given day, just depending on who can be there. So between the families and the children, you know, we're close to a couple hundred people. We have, like I said, 105 beds coming online for women. We've got anywhere from 60 to 80 staying at the overfloor shelter currently. And I know Manager Brown had talked a little bit about what the city of Reno is doing to expand the male capacity and the low-barrier folks. So I think regionally, you know, maybe to your question, is that we are expanding capacity and capability of serving these populations. And so we're certainly taking a leadership role in doing that, and already have in the last month or so.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just want to highlight what Assistant County Manager Thomas mentioned, and that is Washoe County has expended $15 million and invested in a property that Governor Standible made sure was passed to our hands via Mike Wildin and Amber Howell for, I think it was $1. Of course, we don't own the land, which is what I was doing for, but they're smarter than me, and, meaning the state. And not only that, but we've increased capacities, and we actually were able to have subject matter experts to go in and modify and provide the needs of unsheltered human beings rather than taking what we get and making due, which has been the history of the region. So, and I want to highlight one very important part that sometimes we, I think, forget. The daycare is the most important to me in terms of what the enhancement is, not to mention the location and all the other things that we all argued for, is that the surrounding environment for children has been drastically changed in terms of comfort, care, their visuals, vis-à-vis needles, et cetera. No fault of the operators of Record Street, just the situation we found ourselves in. So the children, who I consider the most vulnerable of this population, who, like all children, have no choices, really win in this situation. And I can't thank staff enough, from the manager down to CFC, to the Director of Human Services, and all the others. And of course, Commissioner Lucy and his wife, I know, have a personal investment in this. Really, if we start coming up with new naming things, we should be thinking about them for social services, because I know they, he did the heavy lift here, you guys. It wasn't us. And then I want to go back to what Commissioner Hartung said about the Crossroads model, and that brings me to that, the tents area or the shelter area that we were talking about. How can we, as a region, using COVID dollars, move into a hybridized new approach to the social worker with a badge, like we used to have with the officers Claire and Marston at Crossroads, who can do the case management, but also people respect their ability to keep them safe from others? And I believe that all of us have a stake in that. The Sheriff's Office needs to be at the table with this, Reno Police Department, Sparks Police Department. Get them involved in how we can change this model through the Crossroads, which we remember was adopted at the national level by presidential contender Madam Secretary and Senator Hillary Clinton as a national model to do. So let's interject this here. We already know what to do, how to do it. We've won awards at the national level for Crossroads as well. Let's change all of this fundamentally. And it also goes into what people are asking us about law enforcement and where are they necessary and where might they not be necessary. I would argue that to keep a unsheltered facility going, we will need law enforcement and we will need social workers. And so I really hope that we can move forward in that approach. That's my grand plan and dream and idea. And again, really bottom line, though, is bravo, great job. And you're right, Madam Assistant County Manager Thomas, it didn't seem to phase any of your plans and your staff's plans in terms of COVID-19 to get this rocking and rolling. And you drug us all the way through there with these, I think, virtual press conferences. And I have to tell you, your Health Services Agency Director is bouncing off the walls trying to drag me in to see it, and I have to maintain I will have no indoor meetings with anyone until there is a vaccination or a treatment. So bravo to staff, heavy lift. I know it was, you probably never thought it was going to happen, and you were getting it from every single angle, but this commissioner knows that that was not only a labor of love, it was labor. So thank you, thank you, thank you. This is a very positive day for all of Washoe County to celebrate the assistance that we provide to those that are so very vulnerable in our community. And when it comes to your asking for direction of how often to come back, I guess I would leave that to you and your subject matter expert, based on your data and the way the trends go. I could give you an arbitrary date, quarterly, you know, daily. I don't know. So my direction would be, what do you think is best for us to make any meaningful conclusions based on the data to provide further policy direction is how I would like it. So thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Commissioner Jung. Okay, anybody else? Chair Lucy?
Madam.
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Vice Chair, thank you. I do want to follow Commissioner Jung. She's absolutely right. I can't thank this commission for their support enough, the manager, Assistant County Manager Thomas, but most of all, the vision that Amber Howell put forward for these children. Because Commissioner Jung is right. When we talk about vulnerable people, some of the most motivating acts is when we would go down to Record Street and see these children and the environment that they had to evolve within. And I can tell you, just based upon the commitment that she's exerted, Director Howell and, you know, Kim Schweigert with the HSA and all the staff at HSA that have really put in the time, that place is beautiful. And that's where children do find their way, to find that life is beautiful outside of a dreary, difficult experience. And it is important for us to continue to maintain that for these children as they move forward in their life. And they have done that. They have done that work. And it's all at the guidance of this commission and what we've been able to provide for them. And I can't thank them enough. I think these kids are really going to be stepping on a new foot, and we really are providing a new situation, other than just temporary housing, a true start at a new life. And for me, it just, it makes, it brings tears to my eyes when I think about how cool these kids' life is going to be, and we are changing what our region and what our community can see from these individuals going forward and giving them that start, that first helping hand to something better.
Thank you, Chair Lucy. I absolutely agree with you. I watched the video of the kids playing when they first moved over there. Oh, my goodness, it was so exciting, brought tears to your eyes just to watch them. They were so thrilled. So Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas, do you have everything you need? Any direction, any additional direction you need from us?
No, thank you. It was very helpful that Commissioner Jung circled back and let us know. We will get some meaningful data for you and bring it forward so that you can have it regularly, and we'll get together and figure out when that is. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, appreciate your time. And this is styled for action, so do we have any public comments?
I don't have any emails, Madam Chair.
Anything on Zoom? Okay. We have no public comment, and we don't really need to do any action because we've given direction, that's our action. So let's close Item 7 and move on to the donations. And I think Commissioner Herman is going to read the donations for us today.
I'd be happy to do that. So 8A is the recommendation to accept donations in the amount of $320,000 from Wilbur May Foundation, retroactive to date of receipt. $220,000 restricted for FY21, general operating support of Wilbur D. May Center, excluding all county overhead, and $100,000 restricted to support FY21 temporary exhibits at the Wilbur D. May Museum. Community services commissioned District 3 for possible action. Shall I read the second as well?
Mm-hmm.
8B is recommendation to accept one-time appreciation gift donations, estimated value of $2,935, including a $25 cash donation from private citizens to Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and if approved, authorize Comptroller's Office to make appropriate budget amendments. Sheriff. All Commission Districts for possible action.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. And was that in the form of a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I will second it. And do we have any comments from any of the commissioners regarding this? Hearing none. Do we have any public comments?
I have no emails, Madam Chair.
Anything on Zoom? Okay, we have nothing. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. All those in favor of the donations, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries with all commissioners voting. Thank you, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager.
Yes, our consent agenda items are 9A through 9E3. So they include, 9A is the approval of the BCC minutes, meeting minutes of June 16th and June 23rd.
I don't, Mr. Manager, I don't think we have to read them.
Don't have to read them.
I think they're clearly in the thing, so I think everybody can see them, unless you just have an overriding desire to read today.
No, ma'am, that is fine by me. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comment on any of these, Madam Clerk?
I have no emails.
Anything on Zoom? We have nothing on Zoom, so we'll close public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have?
Hard tongue.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Anything, any, anybody opposed? Motion carries with all commissioners voting. Thank you, everybody. All right, with that, we will go, and we have pulled Item 10 because we are going to review it in a legal session. And so I don't think we need the presentation, correct, Mr. Manager?
That is correct.
However, Madam Chair, we did receive a letter from the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, which we will place on the record for Item Number 10.
Okay, thank you very much. And so then we will move to a block vote. Mr. Chair, did you have the block vote, or would you like me to do it? Mr. Chair?
Sorry, I do not have the block vote, Madam Vice Chair. Could you please put that in a block for us this morning?
I will. I will put the block vote in for you. I would propose and make a motion that we put Item 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 18 into the block vote. Mr. Manager, would you read those for us?
It would be my pleasure.
And Madam Chair, just for clarification, did that include 17 or no?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Item Number 11 is a recommendation to approve, a request to initiate proceedings to amend the Washoe County Code, Chapter 50, Public Peace, Safety, and Morals pursuant to a request by Commissioner Herman to identify that parcel 087-021-20 is exempt from the congested shooting boundary to allow legal target shooting and direct the county clerk to submit the request to the district attorney for preparation of proposed ordinance pursuant to Washoe County Code Section 2030 and 2040, Community Services. Item Number 12 is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive bidder for the 2020-2021 Slurry Seal for Selected Services in Washoe County, PWP-WA-2020-270, Project, I'm sorry. Staff recommends Sierra Nevada construction in the amount of $2,234,007, and approve a separate project contingency fund in the amount of $250,000, Community Services. Item Number 13 is a recommendation to award county bid number 3137-20 and authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute a one-year purchase order agreement for the rental, operation, and maintenance of floodwater and seepage pumping and piping systems around the Swan Lake and at the Lemon Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant, effective August 1, 2020. Staff recommends cashman equipment in the amount not to exceed $740,000, and if approved, further authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute possible future renewals to the purchase order agreement of up to four additional years contingent on budget availability and approval from the county manager, an annual amount not to exceed $740,000 plus any change for the CPIU based on preceding year's 12-month index change, effective July 1 of each year, and apply to the previous year's adjusted days fee, Community Services. Item Number 14 is to recommend to accept FY21 Victims of Crime Act, or VOKA Innovative Sub Grant Award from the State of Nevada, Division of Child and Family Services to support services for commercial sexual exploitation of children, CSCC, in the amount of $150,000, 37,500 county match, retroactive for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. Authorize Director of Human Services Agency to retroactively execute the sub-grant award and related documents and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustments, Human Services Agency. Item Number 15 is a discussion and possible recommendation to appoint Sergeant Justin Roper as the acting chief of the Department of Alternative Sentencing, DAS, per Washoe County Code 11.030, and approve a 10% salary adjustment due to the retirement of Chief Joseph Ingram, effective August 7, 2020, manager's office. Item Number 16 is a recommendation to approve contract for armed and unarmed professional security services via the State of Nevada Contract, CET-S, 19049, awarded to Allied Universal Security, retroactive to July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Estimated annual expenditures are anticipated as $2,526,189 for FY21. If approved, authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the agreement, manager's office. Item Number 18 is a recommendation to approve fiscal year 2021 annual renewal of the Acela product subscription in an amount not to exceed $467,000 for tech services.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we have any public comment?
I have one email on Agenda Item Number 11.
Mm-hmm.
And before I read that, Madam Chair, did you get a second for your motion?
Oh, did I get a second for the motion? Did somebody second my motion on the block vote?
Hard tongue.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hartung. Thank you.
This email is on Agenda Item Number 7 from Carol Feinberg. Esteemed County Commissioners, I just learned that on today's Agenda, Item 11, you would be discussing opening a new area for recreational shooting. I am unable to call in at this time. A dedicated shooting area is exactly what Washoe County needs, and I encourage and strongly urge you to vote yes on this measure. Many thanks, Carol Feinberg.
Any other public comments on any items?
Not on these consent items, Madam Chair.
Anything on Zoom? Nothing on Zoom? All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for staff on Item 12.
Okay.
Is either Mr. Solero or Mr. Smith or someone from staff available? My question is, is, and I understand how important this is for the region to keep our streets in good repair. And where does this come from, you know, a separate project contingency fund? So I'd like to know about that contingency fund.
For the record, this is Duane Smith, Director of Engineering Capital Projects, to answer the Commissioner's question. That contingency fund comes from the same source as the overall project and is captured within the, within the Roads Fund. I believe that's Fund 216, I'm pulling that up as we speak, just to verify.
Is that, is that funded through our portion of the RTC 5 gas tax, Mr. Smith?
The gas, the fuel tax does fund a very significant portion of all of our road projects related to our operation and support of those roads, yes.
Okay, okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that it was, it was not, not just general fund money without, and I really liked the way staff put up on item 13, a contingent on budget availability, so that, that we can pull back in the event that, that we have unforeseen issues in terms of our budget and revenues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Any other questions from any of the commissioners? On any of these items? Okay, with that, we have a motion, we've done public comment, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the block vote, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all commissioners voting. And so with that, we will go to item 17, Mr. Manager.
Yes, item 17 is to accept the registrar of voters' submission of the petition to establish the unincorporated town of Warm Springs Valley, per NRS 269.540, and confirmation of the registrar of voters has verified that the petition presented to the Board of County Commissioners contains the requisite number of signatures for this petition to be brought to the Board for further action, and direction to staff to review and return to the Board with recommendations for further Board action, which may include the placement of the question on the 2020 general election ballot by resolution, per NRS 269.550. Registrar voters, and our registrar voters is here this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good morning, Ms. Specula, how are you?
Good, well, thank you.
Good, welcome.
Thanks, good morning to everybody. I am bringing forward the petition to establish the unincorporated town of Warm Springs, and that was filed with my office in February of this year. I received the requisite number of signatures from the petition, petitioners. They had submitted 269 signatures, and they needed 40, I'm sorry, 74 to be deemed sufficient for this petition to move forward to the Board of County Commissioners for direction.
Thank you very much. So the purpose of today is to simply move it forward to the county commissioners for direction, so we, we are not approving the actual question to go on the ballot at this time. We won't approve that until our meeting, our first meeting in August, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartung.
Will, will staff bring back a little more in-depth presentation with respect to the fiscal impact of this on both sides? How it will affect us? How it will affect them? Will they take over their own planning? What, what, you know, just sort of the, the implications on all sides? Not, not good or bad, just the implications.
Thank you. Actually, that question has been asked a number of times, and, and as, as staff so graciously pointed out to me, Ms. Specula is not really qualified to answer all those questions, that that's, that's, those are answers that have to come from the staff. And there are several. One other question is, what is the cost to the county, to the county's budget? And so, you know, so there, there are a number of questions, and the answer to you is, yes, they will need to bring that back to us when we vote, when, when this is on our, on our ballot, to vote for it. One other question that is, that has been out there, and we've asked our district attorney to look into it, is if someone comes to us and brings a, if an entity brings us a ballot, a requested ballot question, and it relates to a tax increase, we are required to put it on the ballot, but nobody seems to be clear with the language if we're required, we're required to put this on the budget, I mean, on the ballot. So the district attorney is looking into that for us.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Madam Chair, and I, that, that's, that's really, you know, I just want to know the pros and the cons. What's the, what's the benefit to them? What's the, either the benefit or the downside for Washoe County? What's just, how will this affect? What's the reason for this? What's, just, you know, more, just more information? And I understand Ms. Specula is not in a, in a position, and I think it's probably going to have to come from legal, so that we can better understand how this affects us and how it affects them.
All excellent questions. Thank you, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I could, Dave Watzviall.
Yes, Mr. Watzviall.
Yes, we're, we're looking at all of these issues, we'll let you know what the ramifications are, we'll let you know how the Town Board, Advisory Board gets created if it's approved. Just for the record, the issue that was created is the fact that the statute says that the Board may, by resolution, put it on the ballot, and that's creating some consternation in statutory interpretation, typically may as permissive and not mandatory. So we want to make sure that we're looking at this correctly, and if it's required to be on the ballot, that we want to make sure that we let you know that. So we will look into all of these statutory provisions into this, and let you know what this will look like going forward, including the process that will occur going forward, from the point of if, if it gets approved, if it goes onto the ballot, and if it gets approved, what the process will look like.
Thank you, Mr. Watzviall.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I apologize.
That's okay, go ahead.
I'll wait for you, give me the floor.
Anything else, anything else, Commissioner Hartung?
May I just ask Mr. Watzviall a question?
Certainly, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Watzviall, when you guys bring this back to us, will you, will you, you know, articulate the pros and the cons of this, and how it could potentially affect us, either positively or negatively? I mean, I think that's the, that's the real question. What's, I mean, if this is, if this is such a great thing, why haven't other communities, you know, throughout Washoe County done this in the past? And I'm not looking for an answer right now, I'm just, again, I just want to know the pros and the cons, and, and how this could, again, potentially affect us. That's, that's what I want to know, either positively or negatively.
Okay, understood, and we will, we will do our best to come up with as many answers as we can for you in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Watzviall, thank you, Madam Chair.
You, you bet, Commissioner Hartung. Yes, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you. Mr. Assistant or Deputy District Attorney Watzviall, could you, before you dig that far deeply, we do need a definitive legal decision as to what, if we have any need for staff to give us it one way or the other, because if we have to place it on the agenda, I mean, on the ballot for the law, that's up to, then we have a pro and con ballot writers. So I, I think before you, staff spends all this time and effort, let's, we need to know definitively, do we have discretion, or do we not? Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
I agree with the Commissioner. If it's not required, then the other things become not an issue. So we will look into that. Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
Well, and, and I would just comment that I, I think they are still an issue, because even if it's not required to be on the ballot, there may be people on this, who sit on this commission who want it on. So we still, I think we still need to have the questions answered, that both myself and, and Commissioner Hartung have brought forward.
Good point, Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, go right ahead.
No, I said, good point by you, Madam Chairwoman, I didn't think about it outside, that's a very good point. We do, we do need everything, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, any other comments from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Herman?
Yes, just a few little bits of information. Paradise, which is where the Strip is in Las Vegas, is an unincorporated town. Minden, Gardinerville, and about 40 other areas are unincorporated towns.
Yeah.
It's a very common thing, so don't be afraid of it. Thank you.
Good point. All right, I do see we have some public comment. Madam Clerk? Oh, okay, Ms. Specula, go right ahead.
As we're talking about the process moving forward, I would also caution that placement of this question on the ballot, and we will need to make that direction at the next board meeting, which I believe is...
August 18.
August 18. Because that will need to be included on the ballots that we send to our printers. If we don't get it on around that time, the likelihood of me actually being able to add it to the ballot is greatly diminished at that point. We can start if, if it's, if there's a direction to move forward with creating an arguments committee, and we can have them start on their work, and then have the appointment of the arguments committee at that time, at the same county commission meeting. And that way, the work will already be in progress, so if it is approved to go on the ballot, everything will be ready to go.
Okay, okay, good. All right. Thank you very much, and with that, we will go to public comment.
First up, Madam Chair, we have a voicemail from Kathleen McCovey.
My name is Kathleen McCovey, and I am calling for the BCC meeting, and this is Agenda Item Number 17. And I don't know how people were able to circumvent the petition, the way that we petition things and get them on the ballot, but I'm not real happy that they did, as far as that Agenda Item goes. I do not want another layer of government out here, I do not want an unincorporated township. I've been out here 27 years, and I'm just fine the way it is. And I'm really annoyed that these California transplants are coming in here and trying to change our way of life. It's got to stop, and it stops here with trying to circumvent the actual way that we're supposed to, by law, put something on the ballot. Thank you.
Next, we have a voicemail from Maeve Ambrose.
This is Maeve Susan Ambrose. I'm calling regarding the BCC meeting, July 21, Agenda Item 17. As Chair of the Warm Springs Community Advisory Board and Chair of the Warm Springs Community Alliance, I've heard from residents on both sides of the UIT issue. Since the residents are being asked to decide the future of our valley, I believe there needs to be more time for the community members to research both the pros and cons of becoming an unincorporated town. I'm supporting the possible placement of the question on the 2020 general election ballot by resolution, per NRS 269.550, and as you know, this election will have a higher voter turnout. It will motivate more of the community to let their voices be heard at the ballot polls. The current signatures verified was 74, which is not representative of the entire number of voters who voted within our boundaries at the 2018 general election, which was 734. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have a voicemail from Marshall Todd.
Hello, this is Marshall Todd, I'm the vice chair of the Citizens Advisory Board in the Warm Springs area, and my comment is for the BCC meeting, July 21, Agenda Item Number 17. Since this is a presidential election year, I feel that the, the unincorporated town effort that's gone on, they collected enough signatures to get off the ballot, or to be considered for the ballot. I'd like to see that go on the ballot, since it's an election year, there should be enough people to vote to give us a good decision on it. That'll give us an upper down, and then we can move on. Thank you.
And we have one final voicemail from Gretchen Miller.
Hi, my name is Gretchen Miller, and this is for the BCC meeting, Item Number 17 on the agenda. I reside in Warm Springs Valley, also known as Palomino Valley, and my public comment relates to Agenda Item 17, which refers to a petition to establish an unincorporated town in our valley. I decline to sign this petition because I don't think it is necessary. Warm Springs Valley is rural. I prefer the question not to be on the ballot this November. The organizers could not obtain signatures of even close to 51% of qualifying voters in our valley. So I hope you do not allow this to get on our ballot for the next election. Thank you very much, bye-bye.
And then, Madam Chair, we have three emails. The first one is from Sharon Gustafson. It's "Votes in Opposition" is the title. "I, Sharon Gustafson, a registered voter who regularly votes, as well as in the 2018 general election and the 2020 primary election, am writing this in opposition to forming an unincorporated township in Warm Springs Valley. I've spoken to numerous people who are also in opposition to forming an unincorporated townships in Warm Springs Valley, but I am speaking directly on both my behalf and with the consent of Kathy McCovey, who has given me consent to speak on her behalf as well. We oppose Agenda Item Number 17 because forming an unincorporated township will be another layer of government imposed upon us. This imposition could also raise our taxes. It would be akin to imposing upon us an undesirable homeowners association, which would be an HOA on steroids. The people in this valley do not enjoy having more government controls foisted upon us, along with higher taxes, nor do we want unspecified and possibly unsavory persons dictating limits on our freedoms. Out of over 1,500 souls in our valley, a mere 74 cannot dictate control over us and against our wishes for independence from such an arbitrary form of additional governments, governance. Thank you, Sharon Gustafson." Next, we have an email from Pam Roberts. "Dear Chairman Hartung and members of the Board, I am providing public comment on Agenda Item 17, which relates to a petition submitted by a small group of Palomino Valley residents who want to establish the unincorporated town of Warm Springs Valleys. I am one of many residents who declined to sign the petition for many reasons. First, I've made a conscious decision to move to a rural location without any homeowners association, and I view the Town Advisory Board as an HOA board on steroids. Second, I don't believe the proponents have adequately researched or shared the cost of forming and running another layer of government. I believe the proponents have underestimated the cost of forming and running a TAB. Someone will need to draft bylaws, policies, and ordinances, and it won't be free. Third, I don't agree with the proponents who have stated that the Town Advisory Board, print TAB, will have more influence with the BCC than advocacy by organized and prepared residents. In addition, we already have a Community Advisory Board, CAB, which should be allowed to meet and advise annexation by the city of Reno or Sparks, but we don't need an unincorporated town to stop all that. I'm also concerned that the petition wants to limit the number of board positions within the specific area, within the specific plan area, to two positions. The SPA is the only area in Warm Springs in which the county has approved lots smaller than 40 acres. Although no major developer has fulfilled the original aspirations of the folks behind the creation of the SPA, it could someday have 1,700 homes. I question whether it is even legal to limit the representation of one area within the boundaries of the unincorporated town. The BCC, BCC should let the voters decide, and since the proponents did not get enough signatures to bypass the BCC to get the question on the ballot, I believe it should fail. However, because the proponents did collect enough signatures to meet the 10%, the law does give the BCC authority to put the question on the next ballot. Should the question make the ballot, I am confident it will fail. Respectfully submitted, Pam Roberts, Palomino Valley resident." And one final email from Laurel Cotay. "My husband and I have lived in Palomino Valley for over 22 years. We are totally opposed to the unincorporated township. Please do not approve this. This is only wanted by a few disgruntled people who are always complaining. Thank you for your time, Laurel Cotay." This is only wanted by a few disgruntled people who are always complaining. Thank you for your time. Laurel Cotay. And that's all the public comment I have at this point, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there any, are there any comments on Zoom? All right.
Wait, excuse me, Madam Chair, let me, I've had a couple of things here.
You have something else?
Oh, no, this is for the next time. It's okay. We're good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, we will close it and bring it back to the board. And so, yes.
I'm sorry, one, one other question for Mr. Wattsviol and/or Mr. Large, whomever is working on this, and that is, uh, please make sure that the board understands how this could potentially affect the current GID that resides in the Warm Springs Valley.
Good question. Thank you, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, so the purpose of today's, um, vote is to, um, accept the registrar of voters, I'm looking for glasses, accept the registrar of voters' submission of the petition that, um, and that confirms that the registrar of voters has verified the position presented to the Board of County Commissioners contains the requisite number, and I am looking for a motion to that effect. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I will second it for purposes of getting us through this, which confirms that the, um, the voter registrar did in fact find, uh, that the requisite ten percent. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, aye was an aye as well, Madam Chair.
Okay, so,
This was aye, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, thank you. All, in that case, it passes with all commissioners voting in, in favor. Thank you. And with that, we will move to item nineteen, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Deanna.
This is the item, Madam Vice Chair, that's being continued?
Yes, this, this item is being continued.
It's a public hearing, okay.
It is a public hearing now.
So it's a public hearing, item nineteen, Appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's Denial of Regulatory Zone Amendment, Case Number WRZA two oh dash zero 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 three Reno Christian Fellowship, to amend the Southwest Trucking Metals Regulatory Zone Map, a component of the Southwest Trucking Metals Area Plan, to change the regulatory zone for three parcels, APN zero four nine dash one five three dash ten, eleven, and twelve, totaling twelve point five five acres from low-density suburban, uh, one dwelling unit per acre maximum, allowing up to twelve units, two medium-density suburban, three dwelling units per acre maximum, allowing up to thirty-six units, for Reno Christian Fellowship, Inc. The parcels are located adjacent to and west of the church, and if approved, they are authorized, the chair, to sign a resolution to that, to this effect, Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. That is opening the public hearing, and we, since we have pulled this, um, when we did this last time, we did not actually take all the public comment of those people, um, who had already submitted their documentation. We just had their names read into the record. Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Madam.
And since I entered that into the computer system, we've, um, I've received three more, two more emails, one in favor and one opposed. So we've got a tally of twenty-eight in favor and seven opposed.
All right.
Those in favor include Brent Burks, Eric Henry, Dennis Pelham, Brandon Evans, John Tursich, Fred and Margaret Nolan, Mike Grover, David Steeg, Myron Banwart, Marge Greenfield, Mary, and Ed Schnidl, Charles Hurston Roberts, Chris Chimitz, Kermit, and Claudius Sharon Brock, Catherine Erickson, Robert Erickson, LaGranciaus Roberts, Joe Radisette, Bruce and Marcia Baswell, Susan Stewart Hooks, Jerry Center, Mike Peretti, Brad Chin, Laura Perez, Sue Grammie, Robbie Bryan, Justin Norvik, and Stephen Anderson. Those opposed are Joseph Caravello, Rosemary Holiday, David Schwer, Chad Nichols, Ken Green, Robert Wakefield, and Lars Jensen.
Okay.
And I think that's all the public comment we had via email.
You don't have any additional public comment? Um, is there anything by Zoom? So we do have a comment by Zoom. Please put that on.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Letty. You can speak now. You've been unmuted.
Thank you. I appreciate being able to speak in front of the commission. Um, this is the second time that I'm aware of where we have had a zoning change here in this area of Washoe County. Uh, first time, there was overwhelming, um, participation against the zoning change. Um, the planning commission voted against it. From my understanding, it was overturned against the wishes of the people who live in this community. It was about four hundred to two against the zoning change. It appears that it's happening again, uh, where we're changing our density, and the planning commission did deny it. And yet, Mr. Lucy has already put together paperwork to overturn this, and the commission is set to vote on overturning the planning commission's denial of it. And I just find this extremely disappointing that the residents out here do not have a voice that means anything to the commission. Uh, this has been going on for some time. We have a wall on Arrow Creek, a sound wall that is disintegrating, and Washoe County has done nothing about it for ten years. I cannot even get an email returned from Mr. Lucy, yet a developer can come in, and Washoe County will immediately jump to their wishes and do whatever they want. And I'm just voicing my displeasure with Mr. Lucy and with this commission on trying to overturn the planning commission's denial of a zoning change. It's the second time it's happened. Um, that is all I have to say.
Next up on Zoom is Dave Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman, you may go ahead. You've been unmuted.
Thank you. Um, this is actually Jennifer Chilton. I, I also live in this area, and I first would like to point out that um, I am one of those people who sent emails in, and my name was not registered. I know of at least four other individuals whose names were not registered. However, I do know they sent emails in. All of us are opposed to this change. Um, I, I would hope you would all consider that, first of all, the names you read off as in support, I would like to know how many of those people actually live up here. I suspect those are church members who commute in. They don't actually live up here. Very few of those probably do. So I would suggest, please, clarifying that before you make a decision based on how many positive responses you've got. Secondly, for those of us who live up here, I, I would hope you would consider that, you know, the, the nature and the character of this area, it is a property area. We all moved here in order to have some space. Once you allow increased density on this property, which is, you know, it's, it's in our neighborhood, you've, you've really opened Pandora's Box, and that's going to be impossible to close. We will be seeing more and more of these properties moving in, and the character of our area is going to suffer for it. So I am opposed. I hope that I can convince you to be opposed and to uphold the current zoning. Most of us are not against the church building on this property. We would just like them to build in a manner that's consistent with all of our other properties that are currently here. And that's all. Thank you.
Next, we have Lars via Zoom.
I have submitted a comment via email, and my comment is that, uh, while I live at one two six seven five Thomas Creek Road, my name is Lars Jensen, and I share property boundary with the RCF, the Reno Christian Fellowship. So we are immediate neighbors. Uh, they want to change the zoning to omit the entity. I want to let you know that they never contacted me to let me know, uh, even though I'm a neighbor that is trying to implement such a major change to the neighborhood. I feel as a good neighbor, uh, they ought to have shown me that courtesy. Uh, we strongly propose, oppose the proposed change. We came to the neighborhood precisely because of its rural and peaceful nature, its lower density, its lower traffic congestion, and we like the neighborhood to stay that way. Um, also, this area only has two small exit roads, which are already, um, fairly congested. And in case of a wildfire, this will be, uh, the way everyone will have to leave, and at the same time, and more congestion will exacerbate that issue. And then I finally want to say the purpose of the, uh, proposed zoning change seems to be to create a means of profit for the church, and the RCF apparently expects the neighborhood to suffer the consequences. That's not fair. That's called greed. Uh, with the proposal, the RCF is showing little concern for what happens to the neighborhood and for, uh, little concerns for the neighbors it's had for almost thirty years. Please listen to the people who live here. Please vote no to any appeals. Um, thank you for your consideration.
Is Mr. Lars off? Okay, next up is Paul Junkie.
Hello, um, I'm a resident in, uh, Southwest Vista, and I serve on the HOA Architectural Committee. And, uh, this, uh, this move by the church is, uh, is unwarranted and unwise, in my opinion, because, uh, all of us that live up here in Southwest Vista, there's three hundred and seventy-six families. If we wanted to live in a medium-density neighborhood, we would have purchased our homes in a medium-density neighborhood. But we purchased our homes according to zoning rules and regulations that were in effect at the time. And, and now somebody, all of a sudden, so they can make more money, they want to, they want to change the rules on us. And, and if, if they want to change those rules to medium density, that's going to damage our property values up here in Southwest Vista. And, and so I think, uh, if, if this gets approved, whoever approves it, and the builder, and the developer, and the Reno Christian Fellowship should be, be prepared to compensate us for our lost property value. And I'd estimate that between, uh, a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand dollars per property. And so for our three hundred and seventy-six homes in our homeowners' association, I would think that would be on the order of five million dollars, uh, probably as a starting point for negotiations. And again, we don't want this. And, and I listened to all those names of the people that were supposedly for this project, and I didn't recognize a single name on that list as being a neighbor or somebody that lived in this neighborhood. And, and everybody I've talked to that lives up here, uh, does not want this change to be made. They can build homes on that property, just like we built homes on our property under the same rules. And we don't mind them developing it in, in keeping with the existing neighborhood. But, but to all of a sudden go to medium density, that, that's ridiculous, and it's an insult to our, us existing homeowners who did follow the rules. And, um, the road congestion issue and safety issue is, is another impact that other people have mentioned, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. I don't think we have roads or infrastructure in place to support all those extra homes. And that's the end of my comment. Thank you very much for listening.
Next up is Lisa Mitchell via Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Um, our home, uh, we are in the Thomas Creek Estates area, and our home, um, uh, is adjacent directly to this, uh, property that's being, um, rezoned, potentially rezoned. And our home has been here for thirty-five years, and I'd like to also reiterate the comments of the previous people that we moved out here because we wanted space and the quietness of the neighborhood that this provides. And if we live on a half-acre parcel, and if this were approved, we would then have three homes behind our property. It would increase the noise of our quiet neighborhood, and it would also block our view. We have a very nice view of the valley and is the reason that we moved up here. And with those homes behind us, and I don't know what their plans are, but I would assume that they would do two-story homes that would then block the view that we have, um, that we have here in our home. We are not opposed to them developing this land. We knew that would come at any time. But to change it to thirty-six homes in an area where everyone is on a half-acre or more is inconceivable to me, and I hope that the, that you will not approve this rezoning to maintain our property values and our quiet neighborhood that, um, we have currently. Thank you.
Adam Auerbach via Zoom.
Yes, hello, commissioners. My name is Adam Auerbach. I own two homes on Rock Haven Drive, which is directly across from the property in question, and of course, I oppose the zoning change proposed. Um, I'm just a little bit at a loss as to why, uh, there are so few emails reported by you for the opposition and so many for, uh, the proponent side. Um, I'm going to go ahead and just quickly reiterate the, the email that I did send to the county commissioners, so it's on record. Uh, dear county commissioners, as you know, the neighborhood is up in arms over the RCF appeal of unanimous decision to deny them rezoning the church properties from LDS to MDS. I'm not going to reiterate points that many of my neighbors and myself have already addressed. The planned development is a bad fit for our neighborhood despite their argument. There is no need for a zone change as there is sufficient land elsewhere for medium-density use. Uh, there is no change in circumstance, nor was there a mistake made when the neighborhood was originally zoned, LDS. Uh, the fact that the RCF wants to develop these properties is just not good enough to justify a zone change. I recommend to preserve and protect the inherent aesthetic quality of our neighborhood and maintain the LDS zoning as originally intended. Uh, thank you, Adam Auerbach. Uh, I'd also like to bring to your attention, you should have received an email from a Ken Green, who brought up some very valid points as to why there may have been, uh, numerous false or misleading claims. Um, I hope you have a chance to review that. I would have actually read some of those off, but I do not have enough time here in my three minutes allocated to, to be able to do that. Uh, thank you very much.
Next, we have Dr. Gerald Lent. Dr. Lent, are you there? You are still muted on your end, we think.
Can you hear me now?
There we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Gerald Lent, and, uh, I'm a resident on, uh, Southwest Vista, and I've lived here since nineteen eighty-eight, and I oppose the zoning change. I wrote a, uh, letter to the commissioners, and, uh, you know, the, uh, the County Advisory Board and the Planning Commission denied these proposals, and these, these were, these meetings were completely vetted, this proposal, before denying it. And there was over a hundred and one pages opposition letters that you're not going to get because they're on, uh, there's too many of them, and there's no support for this, with the exception of what just happened recently. And what happened recently is a church sent out a letter to all of their members, and I don't know if you've seen it, and they requested, uh, to contact Chairman Lucy, uh, to support the rezoning. Well, these members of the church, they don't even live in the area, and if you watch them on a Sunday, they drive up, they live way outside the area, and they might go to church one time a week. We live in the area three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, and they're not even constituents of Chairman Lucy. And, uh, they are, signed a letter supportive because the church sent out a letter. That's not apropos to the, uh, hundred and one letters or more that the residents sent out up there. And the church, uh, the pastor of the church a while back, uh, he, uh, he surveyed several neighborhood residents and told them, if there was no neighborhood support for this proposal, they would pull the application. And not one resident supported this plan. And so what I, what I considered in my letter I sent you, if the Reno Christian Fellowship Church is honestly interested in having a quality development next to them, as they stated, then a better plan would be to postpone any decision on rezoning and start meetings between then a better plan would be to postpone any decision on rezoning and start meetings between the church, Southwest Vista's residents, the HOA, and the neighbors up there to form a quality development that we all can agree on. And thus, the church does not need the zone change. And I'll tell you right now, all the neighbors I talked to, the neighbors are not against a quality development that will not decrease their home values. And if you look at what they're proposing, they have to quit representing sin. There will be a third acre lots. There will be a quarter acre lots or less. And there's nothing like that in Southwest Vista. There's no way you can make these a third acre lots. Do the math. That's just not true. In fact, they will be less than a third acre lots. You can't put 36 homes on 12.3 acres, and with the roadways and everything, you've got to take 20% off and still have a third acre lot. So they've got to quit representing that. And so we're honestly--
Thank you, Dr. Lent. Your 3 minutes is up. Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Chad Nichols via Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name's Chad Nichols. I live at 1735 Rock Haven Drive. I border the Reno Christian Fellowship on the south side. I look over the Reno Christian Fellowship. You know, my home was built in 1986, and like everyone commenting prior, I am commenting to strongly oppose the proposed rezon from low to medium. You know, in case the commissioners haven't visited up here, it's a beautiful area. Everything is, as all the commenters before have stated, designed, built, and been purchased by the homeowners here with a specific size, style, feel in mind. This is completely out of character. I would really love to have the commissioners come up and take a look at this area because it is an absolutely beautiful area. And I just, you know, the proposed rezon is just completely out of character with everything within, say, a mile radius. It's, I beg the commissioners to consider the history of the Truckee Meadows area plan and the 40 years of construction in the very special area of Washoe County. Please, I guess, just, I would, like I say, just, I would like to strongly urge the commissioners to oppose this rezon. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next up is Ken Green via Zoom. Ms. Green, you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I sent in comments yesterday afternoon, and I just want to highlight a number of the items that I identified. First and foremost, the RZA makes a number of false or misleading claims. I listed seven of those. I want to highlight a couple of them. The calming circle versus a roundabout is entirely bound by property owned by Southwest Vista. And so the statement that the property or project can be accessed by that calming circle is flat-out incorrect. Also, it states that MDS zoning is not inconsistent with the existing residential uses of the area. That's also untrue. Every residential parcel surrounding the project is zoned LDS, every single one. And so how one can say that it's consistent with LDS and try to rezon it as MDS is flat-out untrue. And that's actually shown in the RZA, Figure 5, okay? Southwest Vista's development to the north, the RZA states that it includes many lots that are less than 15,000 feet. Again, that's flat-out untrue. Every single lot, every one, is .344 acres or larger. That's 15,000 square feet, every one, including the properties to the south off of Rock Haven. So to try and make this project fit within LDS, even though it's MDS, is misleading at best and a flat-out lie at worst. I want to touch on two more things, I guess. One, the Washoe Development Code. And I included the reference to Section 110, 106, 15 in my comments. LDS, per the Development Code, is intended to create and preserve, and I have to highlight preserve, areas where single-family detached homes in that area are the predominant zoning type, the lot size, having a minimum lot size of 17,500 square feet. Conversely, MDS is intended to create and preserve, again, I want to use the word preserve, areas where single-family detached units at three units per acre are the predominant zoning type and having a minimum lot size of 12,500 feet. So there is no way that MDS, per the Development Code, should be allowed in this area when it's entirely bound by LDS. One more thing I want to touch on. Every single lot proximal to the project site meets the minimum LDS lot size requirements, every one. Every single lot proximal to the project site--
Mr. Green--
Yes, ma'am.
Could you wind up? Your 3 minutes is up.
Yes, ma'am. Not a single lot proximal to the project site meets the MDS minimum lot size requirements. This is, this development would not be in accordance with the Development Code. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Next up is Michael Black via Zoom.
Thank you for taking our comments. I moved up to the Thomas Creek area 40 years ago when there was almost nothing up here. I've been very happy as to how it developed, and in fact, moved a few blocks away to Southwest Vista when it was developed. I totally agree with every comment of Mr. Ken Green. It is totally inconsistent to do a higher-density infill in a almost rural area. There is absolutely no reason for it, other than a one-time increased profit to the church and an increased profit to the developer, and after they're done, then we have to live with it. I certainly don't understand, I mean, the church is going to make a huge profit when they subdivide those lots, sell them to the developer, and by increasing the density even further, they're only going to make a little more profit, one time, and it's over with for them, and we have to live with it. That's all my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Next up is Cheryl Jordan.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I too am confused by those email comments at the beginning saying you only received 25 opposition. We received word from Julie Olander, planner at the Washoe County, that she's received over 100 emails in opposition. And I just want to refute that. I don't understand where you're getting those. My name was not read in opposition, and neither were allotted by neighbors. So I have been a homeowner for 20 years. I boarded the property on the north. We are in attendance at the two denials, Citizens Advisory Board denial and the Washoe County Planning Commission denial. I want to focus on the standards of the Washoe County Code, which was written for most housing developments by the commission that is an attachment to this agenda. The first one Ken Green spoke about as well, about it is consistent. They're stating with these surrounding properties, we refute this. Given many examples of surrounding lot sizes, there is no compatibility with these small lots. They're using their quote "matrix" with all their fancy calculations for properties far and wide, when anyone who can look at a map and see the lot sizes and see that all the properties, all the properties that border and surround this area of land are much, much larger, half-acre or more. Ours is .61 acres, and our neighbors are even larger. These lots will be a net of 9,000 to 11,000 square feet with three homes per acre as they're proposed with medium-density housing after infrastructure. The bottom line is, this is not consistent. It's not compatible either. Number three, more desirable use of land, totally subjective. Who's this according to whom? This is not homeowners in the area do not think this is more desirable. Standard code number four, no adverse effects, subjective, determined by whom? We boarded the property. Yes, there are adverse effects. Loss of property value, mentioned before. Loss of views. We purchased in this area for these views to preserve and protect those views. Also, loss of pristine and quiet. We bought out south in this area for those reasons. Number five, they stayed desired pattern of growth. This is a group of small homes stuck in a small patch of land surrounded by much, much larger lots. This is not desired, and it also looks like spot zoning. Finally, the will of the people is exemplified by over 100 emails received by Julie Olander. We appreciate you recognizing the rights of the citizens who live here. We like to think that the commissioners are elected to serve at the pleasure of the people who elected them. We are their constituents. Listen to us. Look at the land. See for yourself. We are not beholden, that they are not beholden to developers. We appreciate you listening to this. And again, to echo the comment of the other, come on out. Look at the neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Look at the surrounding lots.
Ms. Jordan, your 3 minutes are up. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is L. Schneider. Mr. and Mrs. Schneider, you need to unmute yourself. We can't hear you.
Okay. I've got it. So I live right next door to Cheryl Jordan, so I, and I am also very, very surprised about the large number of people that are for this and the small number of people that are against it, when so many people, as Cheryl said, over 100 people have sent emails in and called and even left voice messages. I also have sent in, after every meeting that we've had about this, I have sent in an email. I'm not usually super comfortable about speaking in front of people. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read you the email that I sent to all of the commissioners. My name is Linda Erger. I reside at 5131 West Tacoma Road, Reno, Nevada, on a .773 acre lot, abutting the proposed 12.55 acres zoned LDS. I have attended in person and virtually both meetings regarding this proposed change, including the Citizen Advisory Board and the Washoe County Planning Commission. Both entities validly determined and denied an amendment to change the LDS zoning to MDS zoning on the Southwest Truckee Meadows Regulatory Zone map. This 12.55 acre property is surrounded on all sides by LDS zoning for more than a mile in all directions. A drastic change such as this, the placement of a higher-density development in a large, long-established area of low-density spot zoning, goes against good, sound planning. This makes the 12.55 acre property more valuable to a potential developer at the great expense of the longtime homeowners. Thankfully, both the CAB and the Washoe County Planning Commission made their valid, unanimous decisions based on the best interest of the community and of the project, as well as fair planning practices. Clearly, they reviewed the information on the proposal and made their decision before determining what is best for the area. Please continue to support the sound decisions that have already been made and deny the amendment to change the LDS zoning to MDS zoning. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Steve Erger.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
My name is Steve Erger. I live at 5131 West Tacoma, which is just to the north of the proposed development. If you can't tell by now, there's a lot of passion around all the calls that you're getting. I think a lot of people are very upset. Pastor Brent has kind of poked the bear and stirred up a hornet's nest with the email that he sent out to his flock, asking them all to basically flood the commission with emails in support of this. As you read off at the very beginning of this, I think all of us that live in the area were very surprised at the number and the names of people that were supposedly in support of this, may not even know anything about it, just they're responding to Pastor Brent's email that he sent out. Again, and this has been stated several times, there's, we know of over 100 emails that have been sent to the commission that were not reflected in accounts that were for, or excuse me, against the proposed zoning change. So I don't think we're being fairly represented here. We're not going to go away, even if we continue this. And it's just, there's a lot of passion in this group. Nobody in the neighborhood wants this, and I'm hoping that some of the pastor's flock are listening to this and understand what they're really doing to the neighborhood. Another point that I'd like to bring up is that we've been told several times that there is an easement from this property, these lots, into the roundabout. The roundabout is surrounded by land that is owned by the Homeowners Association for Southwest Vista. The developer has not been very forthcoming, has not produced this so-called easement, and kind of doubt that there really is one. So I'm not sure how they're going to tie into the roundabout, which has been correctly been stated, it is a traffic calming. It's not a roundabout for moving a lot of traffic. Appreciate you listening to me, and we really hope that you do understand our feelings on this, that you will represent your constituents who live in this area. Thank you.
Next up is Rick Barrether. And Mr. Barrether, please state your name and tell us how to pronounce it. You're still muted.
Hey.
There you go.
Yes, good afternoon now. My name is Rick Barrether, and you did a pretty good approximation. My wife Christine and I are residents at 13405 Welcome Way, Reno, Nevada. We bought our property in 1994 and are the original owners. We've lived here for 26 years. Our back property line adjoins the Reno Christian Fellowship property. Our parcel is 2.18 acres. We are opposed to the zoning change of the Reno Christian Fellowship for a lot of the reasons that have already been mentioned, potential decrease in property value being one of them. Also, if there are 36 units on these parcels, there would be a significant increase in traffic accessing the one entrance exit to this area onto Zalesi Lane. And already, traffic is very congested at rush hour times, and 36 additional units could possibly add 72 more vehicles to the congestion if each new unit had two cars. We hope that there could be transition parcels so that the landowners with half-acre, one-acre, and two-plus-acre parcels would not have more than one unit adjoining their property so as to preserve their land and home values. We would much prefer that the zoning stay LDS. Thank you for taking note of our interests and concerns, and we hope you will oppose this appeal. Thank you very much.
That concludes all the public-- oh, we've got someone else coming in on Zoom. Looks like Mr. Jordan dropped off the Zoom call, Madam Chair.
So--
Oh, someone's coming back in. Nope.
Okay. So that is the last public comment. So we should make a point, putting on, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the board, and make a point of putting on the record for everyone that the number of comments that were discussed today are those-- are those that were resubmitted for this meeting. Those that were submitted for the meeting on the 14th are not tallied in that number. So, but they are tallied for all the commissioners to see. And if there are comments that came directly to the commissioners, those will be sent to Washoe 311 if they haven't already been sent there. So all of the comments, positive or negative, will in fact get on the record. And with that, we will bring it back to the board. We will take no action on this today. We've done public comment, so we will close this item 19 and move on. Mr. Manager, do we need a closed session for labor discussions?
Not for labor discussions.
Okay. We will pass that on and go on to the next public comment. Madam Clerk, or Matt, actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager.
Yes. We do need an attorney-client today.
Yes.
So, item 21, public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear a public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional public comments?
I have no emails, Madam Chair. We're waiting, there is one Zoom public comment coming in.
Okay, we have a Zoom public comment.
This is Paul Junkie. We reside at 5410 Ventana Parkway. And my comment is to correct one figure I misspoke earlier. I mentioned that there's 376 homes in the Southwest Vista HOA, and that my estimate is those homes will decrease in value from 100,000 to 200,000 per property. So that estimate for the entire HOA is about a $50 million. I mentioned 5 million. The actual number is $50 million in damages based on a quick estimate. And anybody who supports this change of zoning, I think they should come up with some method to propose for compensating the Southwest Vista homeowners if this damaging change goes through. That's all I have to add. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we've got Mike Jordan back.
Okay.
Mr. Jordan? Mr. Jordan, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
There you go, yes.
Great, I apologize for that. Again, my name is Mike Jordan. I live at 5121 West Tacoma Road of the RCF's properties in question. And I'm strongly opposed to the rezoning of this parcel from LDS to MDS. I agree totally with all the opposing comments previously provided. I would just want to echo the size of the properties that border the RCF properties in question. There's 37 homes that border these 12.55 acres. The average acreage of these 37 properties is .78 acres. The smallest properties are a half acre, and they go up to, as you know, several acres. Rezoning to MDS would mean a squeezing and a jamming of an additional 24 homes into LDS zoning. This is totally unnecessary and unneeded as a request to spot zone and jam these additional homes into this small parcel. The Reno Christian Fellowship is welcome. They own the land. They're more than welcome to build 12 beautiful homes that could be built under the current LDS zoning, add beauty and value to this well-established neighborhood that surrounds our RCF parcel for many miles. I would ask that this zoning change request be denied. And again, that RCF, along with their developer and builder partners, build some amazing 12 homes, single-level development on these parcels, befitting of the wonderful, peaceful, and quiet neighborhood that my family has called home and our neighbors have called home for many, many years. Thank you very much for your time.
That's all I'm seeing from Zoom. And I don't have anything more on email.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager?
Item 22 is Commissioner/County Manager announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics of future agendas.
Do you have anything, Mr. Manager?
I have no further, nothing further.
Okay. I don't see anybody signed in, commissioners. Does anybody have any comments, additional comments they'd like to make? Hearing none. We will close item 22, and we are adjourned. And we do have a legal session.